And now it's time to hear from the candidates. Our moderator Paula Vektor will do introductions and explain the procedures. Thank you, Paula.
So after I go over the forum procedures, each candidate will have two minutes for introductory statements. If a question is directed to all candidates, the moderator, that's me, will determine the order in which candidates will respond, and they will each have one and a half minutes for their answer. If a question is addressed to a particular candidate, that candidate will have one minute to respond. The other candidates will have thirty seconds to respond. The candidate to whom the question was originally addressed may have thirty seconds for a rebuttal. Candidates may also submit questions to the screeners on the same written question form used by the audience. The question period will last for one hour. Each candidate will have one minute for closing remarks to summarize their qualifications. Following the forum, candidates are invited to stay a few minutes to answer questions from individual audience members. And they're all sitting in the same order in which I'm going to be introducing them. Farrell Fox is a construction electrician. He has not previously served in any government position. He is a graduate of Royal Oak High School. He is running for position two. Martha Lane has been a public education teacher for thirty-nine years. She has also worked in the retail clothing industry, food service, and dude ranching. She has not previously served in any government position. Along with her husband, Martha owned and operated Morning Star Fishing, a commercial fishing business out of Charleston, for more than thirty years. She is also running for possession, for position two. A.J. Kimball has served on the Banden School Board since 2019 and is the owner of Kimball Custom Art. He is running for position four, and he has no opposition. Anthony Zanino is the self-employed proprietor of Freedom Graphics. He was appointed to the Banden School Board in 2022 and also serves on the Banden Rural Fire Protection District Board. He is running for position six. He also has no opponent. We have one candidate not able to be here tonight, Greg Looney. He's running for position seven. He has served on the school board for four years. He is a former police officer and is a journeyman lineman for the city of Banden. He had to be out of town and could not attend this forum. He also has no opposition. And we will now have the candidates do their introductory statements, two minutes each, and is there the timer going to hold up a sign? They, that says, please talk into your microphone. Uh huh, okay, there's the warning signs. All right, and we are going to start then with the introductory statements. Uh, we will start with Farrell Fox.
Hi, good, looks like a great turnout. I'm glad everyone's here. Uh, yes, my name is Farrell. I've, uh, I've raised six children um, and experienced various school um, aspects with those children. We had a private school. It was a Baptist church um, uh, for a time and uh, of course, public school and uh, the um, charter school, which uh, some are better than others, in my opinion, and uh, I feel that uh, there's a lot of, a lot of things going on in the school systems that need to be um, let's say, straightened up. Uh, across the country is what I'm talking about. Currently here in Banden, I'm not quite sure exactly what the problems are, if there are any. Uh, soon to find out and hopefully I'll be able to have a, a positive input in that aspect. So, thank you.
And Martha?
Well, I'm excited by the opportunity to continue public service in my community, and I hope to gain your confidence and your vote. I was born in Western New York and lived most of my childhood in Northern Ohio. My family moved to Portland, Oregon when I was going into the eighth grade. I have a Bachelor of Arts from Portland State University, a Master's in Education from the University of Portland, and I have about forty years of teaching in grades K through, or kindergarten through community college. Before coming to Banden, I taught at Southern Oregon Community College for five years in the reading lab, supervising school practums and working with the Adult Diploma Program. My experience is practical, and I also assisted my husband uh, for thirty years on the land side of our commercial fishing business. Sort of helped him a little bit. I have lived in Banden for thirty-four years and have taught in the Banden schools for thirty-one. My children were born and raised. They went to Ocean Crest, they went to Harbor Lights, they went to Banden High School, and I'm really proud of the education that they gained there. I'm still proud of it. Um, do I see things that can be improved? Probably, of course. Do I see exemplary solid practices in evidence in all the schools? Absolutely, this is a great school district. There are many important topics facing education today, and some of them need to be seriously studied. To me collectively, none are as important as the day-to-day ethical care and safety of every person in the schools as they learn the reading, writing, speaking, arithmetic, higher math, science, health, and history as it occurs every day for every child. There must be clear communication between transportation, food services, school board, administration, community, teachers, students, and parents. The parents of these students are the millennials, and they expect and deserve a lot. Time up. Darn.
The league is very strict.
They are.
All right, and next we'll hear from A.J.
Hi, I'm A.J. Kimball. Uh, I moved here in ninety-seven. I am a husband to a wonderful wife uh, who's here supporting me, which is awesome. Thank you, honey. We have two children in the school district. In nineteen, when the seat position four came open, uh, there was no one running. And the wife said, I would say told, but suggested that we should have a voice in the school district and uh, a wise man listens to his wise wife and does as he's told. And I'm here, and it has been one of the most rewarding aspects of, you know, our lives, being able to be in our wonderful schools, meet our principals, our supers, our teachers. Um, previously, I worked at a preschool that was housed within Banden uh, at the Ocean Crest. And uh, I fell in love with the school and with the teachers. And through the whole pandemic, the one thing that shocked me more than anything else was the love that the teachers had for their kids and not wanting them to be behind. And that how child-focused our teachers are, not only in their agenda or their, and their goals for teaching their kids because they strive to do the best they can to mold these wonderful minds, but they love their kids, and it shows in how they treat them. From before, you know, preschool when I had them, all the way up uh, to after, uh, into college. And so, our goal is clear communication throughout the entire district, seeing these kids and these teachers supported to the best of our abilities, funding them for the extracurricular things that drive these kids and our community. And I think our community health is based on how well our kids are doing and how well we support our kids. They're our future, so, thank you.
And Anthony?
I'm Anthony Zanino. If anybody in the room doesn't know me, uh, I seem to get around town quite a bit. I managed to beat A.J. to town by two years. I moved here in nineteen ninety-five, and I'm a nineteen ninety-seven graduate of Banden High School. Uh, after that, I've got about fifteen years in public safety. I worked for the Coos County Sheriff's Office for seven years and Banden PD for eight before I decided to take the adventure of starting my own businesses. And that's been an adventure, to say the least. But along the way, uh, I've had the opportunity to serve in my community immensely through the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, as well as facilitating multiple community events and, uh, and happenings around town. That's why most people usually get to know me because I'm usually the guy in the front of the room with the microphone in his hand. I don't know how that happens, but it does. Um, also, my experience uh, in government services is obviously with the Banden Rural Fire Protection District, Board of Director for eight years there, um, so far, as well as, like I said, the Chamber Board. I have two children that are in, in the Banden School District, one in Harbor Lights and one in Banden High School. And I had a unique opportunity growing up. Um, not the most ideal, but I, I came from a, a uh, um, six A school of about forty-eight hundred kids, about twelve hundred per class in high school. And I came to Banden and, and uh, I walked into a classroom or a class of, of about forty-five. And it was quite a culture shock, to say the least. Initially, I was just awestruck by um, the, the polarization of the two different schools. But I learned very quickly that that's where it's at, right here in Banden, and the way our educators and the direct attention to students um, that they receive here. My kids recently, this year, came down to Banden School District from Coos Bay. They couldn't be happier. Their grades shot up. Their social lives got shot up and the, and the uh, level of involvement they were able to have. I'm obviously a newcomer to the district. They, I was graciously appointed to the open seat in twenty-twenty-two. I've gotten my bearings and got on the ground, and I absolutely love the group of professionals that I get to work with, not only on the school board, but in our administration staff as well.
All right, now we're going to start with the questions. And at this point, I have questions that are going to be addressed to all of you. You'll all get a chance to answer the question. And as I mentioned it at the beginning, um, you will each have one and a half minutes to answer these general questions. And I, you'll, I'll be rotating, so you'll take turns being the first to answer. And we'll go ahead and start at the end there and give Farrell the chance to answer the first question first, which is, what relevant skills and experience do you bring to school board service in education, personnel management, and/or budget management?
Well, that's quite a bit to, uh, consider. Uh, my experience in the construction industry was as foreman. Um, and um, so there's a, you know, a bit of uh, management involved with that. Uh, then uh, uh, what were the other?
Education.
Yeah, so, well, and I spent four years in apprentice class to be, come a, a journeyman electrician. And um, what um, I feel that is um, important to all that are um, uh, involved with the uh, system of, of education uh, is common sense. That needs to be um, considered, highly considered when uh, things are being uh, can, uh, discussed and um, decided upon. Um, there's a, I think, a lot of uh, bad uh, decisions being made in different places. You know, the safety of children and the uh, exploitation of children that is, I think, really bad. Um, and if, I, I'm, I'm not saying that's happening here, but hopefully it's not.
All right, and Martha? You need me to repeat the question?
Sure.
What relevant skills and experience do you bring to school board service in education, personnel management, and/or budget management?
Well, relevant skills, because I've had forty years in education, I think maybe very strong for me. Uh, communication, a knowledge of the inner workings of the, of all the various employees at the school district. Um, I think that with that, I'm going to go off a little bit on the skills. Communication, budgeting, uh, probably no professional experience in it, but I have taken our humble nest egg of a teacher and a commercial fisherman, and we're doing very well. Um, it, it, so I don't think that exactly translates into a school district, but I'm aware of a lot of aspects of that, especially with a commercial fishing business. Um, I think that I would establish time in each school, probably during Teacher Appreciation Week, and use my ability to talk to people and to listen and find out what comments, what conversations they're having. I'd also set up an email account specifically for our millennial parents so that there is a, a way for them to access us. Um, I believe in polls. Uh, when I was teaching, I remember our heads were all a-swim with new curriculum and testing procedures. And yet, our principal, a far-seen principal, had the parents fill out a questionnaire, and it came back that the single most important thing to those parents was the safety and the happiness of their children. So that's very important to keep those kind of um, avenues open.
All right, same question to A.J. Do you want me to repeat it?
Absolutely.
What relevance, what relevant skills and experience do you bring to school board service in education, personnel management, and/or budget management?
Relevant skills that I have and experience is I have worked in a preschool. I've seen how it functions. We had a very low-budget uh, preschool, which meant we were very hands-on and we were miserling those, you know, each penny as we possibly could to get as much as we can out of it. And that translates into looking over these budgets and going, we're supposed to pay everything with this small budget? All right, let's see what we can come up with. Uh, I have years of uh, spending time with children through the church. We, I've counseled high school camps uh, many years, spending weeks of time up at Camp Furcroft. And so, dealing and organizing kids and people and having them execute and try to be important, you know, accountable to who they are is one of the things that I've come to learn and how to communicate with them. Uh, and so, skills and relevance and experiences. I talk to people, and I like to communicate. And I think that's one of the most important things that we can do on a board is being able to communicate with one another and see where things are going. Talking to our teachers, our staff, and uh, relaying it all and hearing, hearing it and disseminating it into seeing what people really need and how it's supposed to uh, work for a district.
Anthony, same question?
I do not need it repeated. I managed to write it down after hearing it three times. Um, first of all, so a three-pronged question. First of all, on the education portion of it, uh, my experience in education has mostly has been as a student and a, and a learner. So I've learned um, in multiple different environments, like I said, in a large six-A school district compared to a two-A school district. And the education style and the overall curriculum are vastly different, and I can tell you, I really like the two-A system a lot better. Beyond that, um, I was a field training officer and I worked for the Sheriff's Office. So I do, uh, I did um, numerous types of tactical and, and advanced training for different aspects of law enforcement. So I do have a little bit of experience being the teacher side of things. Um, I don't think I'm very good at it, but my students, they seem to learn what they needed to learn. On a personnel management point of view, I was a supervisor for the Sheriff's Office also when I worked there. Um, so I did have a platoon that I worked with. I understand it, um, working with time management, um, dealing with time off and schedule arrangements and stuff like that. And also, while I was working for the Bandit Police Department, I was the shop steward for the union. And uh, so I was able to participate in numerous contract negotiations to facilitate something that worked as well for the agency as it well, as it did for the personnel. And last but not least, on the budget piece of things, on the Banden Rural Fire Protection District, it's a public budget as well, just like the school district. So I've learned to be able to wade through those volumes of documents to learn where the money goes, where it comes from, and how it's translated. I've also worked on a couple of nonprofit boards where it's the same thing, totally different style of budgeting. And then, of course, the business budget, which is absolutely irrelevant when it comes to public funds.
All right, so we're on to a next question, and this time we'll start with Martha. And this question is, in your role as a liaison between the community and the superintendent, how will you solicit and weigh input from teachers, parents, staff, and students?
Well, I, I covered that in that last question. I think that I would set up avenues for good communication. Polls and surveys approved um, and shared with the relevant people concerned with those results. Um, I think that uh, frequently building, visiting buildings and events being a face that people can approach. Um, networking with other important community endeavors around our town. And I think pulling in the business, continuing to pull in the business around Banden, who do so much for every single sport and every single um, need that our schools have, the businesses are there. And I think that continuing to honor and, and respect and give them credit is going to be very important, especially as times get tough and kids, kids grow up and they stay in our community, we hope. And so, um, I think that establishing time in each school, meeting the kids that are going to move on from our schools and contribute back to us is going to be important as well.
Thank you. And A.J., in your role as a liaison between the community and the superintendent, how will you solicit and weigh input from teachers, parents, staff, and students?
My favorite way that I've learned over the past four years is direct communication and conversations. Uh, my favorite thing to do is walk the halls. Uh, our former admin uh, would take us from from the office and go across the entire grounds, checking in with teachers, checking in with principals, checking in with janitorial, I mean, we, we went everywhere. And you learn so much more by having those conversations along the way than you can, I think, any other way. I, I love polls, and we, we've done them. And so you get this nice broad scope of how people feel. But there's something special about having that one-on-one chat with uh, your people. And one of the ways that I think we've been successful is being the face and being out there and asking the questions and seeing people. Uh, and have, just being open. And people know that they can come and ask me and talk to me. And it's not infrequent to get emails, messengers, and Facebook posts and people stopping here or there, asking how things are going and what, what's up with this? And so, being approachable and having those nice conversations, that's my favorite way of doing it, and I think it works really well.
Anthony, same question?
So, a, as a school board member, I believe that's our primary function is we're, we're the frontline of the accountability to the taxpayers and as well as the parents of the district. They're the folks who elect us to represent them and represent their voice. Bearing that in mind, I think it's extremely important to be transparent and be available to people if they're willing to talk to you. I know sometimes people stop in at my business, and it's not the most ideal time, but I'll try to make time to stop and talk to them. If not, we'll schedule an appointment where we can have a cup of coffee or I can meet up with them later on. Um, I also think that being, uh, getting to know your staff that work in the schools is extremely important. And by doing that, I try to attend as many school functions as I possibly can. And it's really easy when you have kids that are older in the district because you're at a lot of the sporting events or stuff anyway. But one example I can think of was, we had a really great home basketball game a few months ago, and I was there that night, and I really wanted to watch the game, but it was the same night as the Ocean Crest Health Fair. And I peeled out of that game for about thirty minutes to go over there and chat with the staff and thank them for what they'd done and visit the parents and, and that had come out to support that event as well. So, the only um, other side of that is, you, you, in, in our, our role, we, we're not a micromanager. We don't directly manage the staff. We, we, we manage the superintendent. So I'm always available, and I love to talk to staff about issues. And uh, if that's something that helps build that bridge, if there's something that they're concerned about talking to the administration about, that's where we become that conduit. But other than that, we're kind of limited in that capacity, and we maintain that for good reason.
And lastly, Farrell has a chance to weigh in. Do you want me to reread the question?
Yes, please.
What, in your role as a liaison between the community and the superintendent, how will you solicit and weigh input from teachers, parents, staff, and students?
Well, that's um, quite a task, it sounds like, and uh, yeah, uh, communication is obviously the primary thing there, I believe, and uh, the um, parents, I, are the, they're, you know, the children. The parents are who is, who owns the children. And I think there's, seems to be a push uh, in a different direction than that. So as, as far as I'm concerned, the, that's a uh, very important uh, issue that should, that will come foremost. And um, and the superintendent, uh, again, communication and transparency, you know, and being honest, uh, it goes a long way, I believe. And uh, you know, to say what you, say what you mean and mean what you say. And uh, be uh, uh, real about um, your, the uh, interaction with these, with different people. Um, and of, of course, in the, the uh, these uh, you, some of these people that have been on the board already have uh, some pretty good things to say about uh, attending um, uh, events and being, uh, you know, visible for uh, conversation with uh, anyone who is interested to know about um, uh, what's going on with the community.
So, we're now ready to start the next question. And the next question is, and the, A.J. will get to answer this first. School safety is an increasing concern, both from external threats and from behavioral issues within the classroom. What needs to be done to create a safe environment for students? And which stakeholders should be included in security planning?
The safety of our kids is absolutely one of the most important things that we have uh, in our community that we need to take seriously. Being on the school board, we've walked the halls, we've walked the grounds. We know the ins and outs of our buildings. So one of the things that we need to, to maintain is, I would almost say, the, the secrecy of it. Uh, one of the things that we have that's a blessing and a curse these days is the internet, where anything can be found and anything can be seen. So having that be at the forefront, minimizing the amount of uh, cell phones we have would go about helping that out in the fact that you're helping to maintain the safety of and integrity of our schools. Keeping the kids safe from themselves, from each other. Uh, the social media is, is horrible on our law, most of our lives in the fact that we can say and do whatever we want without repercussions. And the kids are learning this from early age. And so part of the mental health is realizing that we need to be accountable for that. So minimize the, the social part go a long way. And uh, so that's one aspect. And yet another one is continue to maintain our grounds and our safety. You know, we have lots of, and time's up.
Time's up? All right, so that then gives it to Anthony. Um, do you want me to repeat the question?
This time, if you could, and write it all down.
Next time, you'll be first with the question, so you definitely.
I know, definitely.
Right, yeah. School safety is an increasing concern, both from external threats and from behavioral issues within the classroom. What needs to be done to create a safe environment for students? And which stakeholders should be included in security planning?
Thank you. Um, the first part of it is, I'll talk about the stakeholders, who are the most important. Um, our specialized staff in our district, we've got some extremely talented and very, very well-trained um, not only staff, but also administrators in our district that can help address and bring to our attention those specific needs and concerns that they have so that we can start to formulate a plan. Obviously, our public safety entities, such as our law enforcement and our fire district, they need to be involved in that plan if we have to, when it comes down to emergency response or even a uh, um, risk assessment approaches to how we're doing things. Mental health is another big one. Mental health is another big one. When we have behavioral issues, if it's beyond the purview of, of our staff that we have in-house. And we need to reach out to those resources and make sure that they're involved as well. And as well as any other professional in that same sort of risk assessment that would be able to offer us anything that we're not. Aware of or something that we're not talking about because as educators, you know, that may not necessarily be at the top of our wheelhouse, but we definitely need to be able to reach out to others that can. Help us with that. Um, as far as the direct threats, we know what they are, whether they be externally, somebody that wants to go in and. Make some sort of a lewd act towards the school. So we need to constantly be considering physical security. As well as the mental security of our kids. And that's through not only the education and getting them to the right. Resources that we have available in the district, but also sometimes maybe educating the parents as well about the realities that we face with some of these challenges.
And now to. Farrell, even though you guys have changed. I'm still keeping the same order, so.
Okay.
Pardon me? Yes, absolutely. So, um, Farrell, the question is about school safety. Do you want me to repeat it?
Yes, please.
School safety is an increasing concern, both from external threats and from behavioral issues within the classroom. What needs to be done to create a safe environment for students? And which stakeholders should be included in security planning?
Yeah, uh, that is a, like you said, a very um. Increasingly problematic, it seems. Um, that uh, even the children, um, you know, one-on-one or children on children, I mean. Uh, you know, bullying and uh. And as was mentioned, the uh, social media aspect of it. And I agree that the uh. The cell phones should be uh, uh, taken away or just not allowed in the schools. Uh, you know, it's distracting for everybody and for the kid that's using it. Um, you know, I know there's um. Uh, instances where the parents want to be able to contact their children, uh, you know, readily. But I think there's other ways to do that. So uh, um. The uh, safety and security uh aspect of it, um, as we know, the um. Uh, local police are uh, uh. You know, the first line of uh defense, I would say. Um, and as was also mentioned, the fire and other uh, uh, first responders uh and um. Formulating a, a well, uh, devised plan uh with the professionals um. That are related to the aspects that they are, you know, someone said in their well, in their wheelhouse. Uh, is the best way to go, I think, and my time's up.
Right. And Martha, do you want me to repeat the question?
I think I'll just go with it. I think that the, the ideas that have already come forward from this panel is, have been phenomenal. Um, Anthony's really addressed a lot of the external um, contact people. That procedure that's in place and that can be shored up. Um. Internal events uh like bullying and I think the principals, teachers, aides and parents are pretty much your first line on that one. Um, bringing in professionals is needed, uh, extra assemblies and. Recognition if there's a problem within the schools. Uh, the. Maintenance on the grounds, I think they covered. I think that nutrition and hygiene, oh, sorry. Nutrition and hygiene are, are also. Important considerations because the children that can't come to school with those things in place. They need assistance and they need help and it needs to be without fanfare. It needs to be without shame. It's too much for a teacher to handle at the beginning of a day. So there can be a wonderful opportunity for more volunteer. Work to um, provide those kinds of services to these kids so that they can have a learning day. And not a struggling day. Um, other than that, I think we got, we got this one beautifully covered.
All right. And somewhat related, the next question, and it'll be addressed first to Anthony. Do you think the school district needs to provide more mental health resources for students?
I would say yes to that. I, I, of course, I would defer to our professionals within the district as to what they have to offer, but I feel like. There are uh. Socially, socially and economically, I feel like it seems like the world is accelerating in the ways that things change. And trying to keep up with social norms or social expectations. And. Sometimes even when we do a risk assessment plan, we may even be behind the eight ball, realizing some of the particular challenges that these kids are facing. And they could be of vastly varying levels, all the way from, you know, some troubles they're having at home, whether it be homelessness or possibly neglect. From parents or, or even abuse in the worst case scenarios, you know, all the way down to trying to figure out. Um. You know, take COVID, for example, and our kids that came back and trying to transition back into that. That classroom or that learning environment as adults, we, it seems like that that would be an easy transition for us, but we don't necessarily. I don't think fully understand the impact that, that, that in, in that instance would have on kids. And I think that there are so many facets that maybe we're not even aware of. So, yes, I would say that the mental health would definitely be prudent and applicable. At least if nothing else from an assessment point of view, trying to figure out some of the challenges that these kiddos are facing on a daily basis.
And Farrell. Do you think the school district needs to provide more mental health resources for students?
Um, I don't know what, at what level they are currently providing. Uh, when you say more, I think it needs to be uh sufficient uh mental health um. Uh, you know, assistance and, you know, I think a- also the teachers, well, all the staff can. Recognize, should be able to recognize when there's a problem with a student. And so that student should be, um, you know, taken aside or, or just counseled appropriately and uh. The uh, so the level of uh, uh, mental health uh is a, they're certainly an issue. And I, you know, when there's uh kids that are disruptive, um, I guess that's part of that, I think. That uh, that, that uh, um, they, you know, the. Uh, soft hand of uh, uh correction needs to come into play. Uh, so I, um. That uh, children need to understand that uh, that, you know, the, there's others uh involved. Their neighbors and such, um, their friends uh that uh, that are, people are there. The children are there to learn. That's the primary thing. And uh, when there's a problem with uh. Uh, uh, that is uh, affecting that learning process. That's not a good thing and that they all need to understand that.
Martha.
Uh, do I think there should be more mental health? Um. I think I'm with Farrell that I'm not exactly sure what, what is being provided. For our professionals and the students in our school, but that it is an important. Field uh of study and as has been pointed out, that there are many ways to go with that. I think that a good, healthy. School climate can go a long way toward making differences acceptable. Um, and bullying to recede when the climate of the school. Can reach a tipping point with students. And that takes a lot of example. Uh, ma- takes a lot of examples to follow for children if they're not getting it at home or in the community somewhere. That, that's a lot of responsibility that lies in a school day, which has to happen. Or uh, we have unhappy and unpleasant and disruptive and no learning. And so, yeah, it's really, really important. That we consider uh children at their age, their interest level. We teach to them specifically where they are. And lead them forward, uh, reduce anxiety. Our conflicts that are going on right now are not theirs. Uh, those don't need to be, you know, hammered over them. Um, I think that schools should be a fairly pleasant situation with good professionals in the background to be there.
And AJ.
Does a school need to be, to provide more mental health? Uh, absolutely. And. Let me tell you a few things that the school district has been doing just since we've, I've been on. Um. We have an administrator who just stepped out. She is providing social, emotional training and she hasn't. Finally provided, being able to provide it for the entire staff from janitors to bus drivers, meaning. There, everyone is getting training on how to deal with themselves and then how to deal with others. Which is odd to think that we still need to be taught that, but we do. And I, I'm amazed at how. How it translates from our teachers and staff to our kids. And how, if everyone is communicating the same language and the same learning, they can help each other out. And so I've been seeing that. Um. Recently, we have had the opportunity to have mental health workers and counselors in all three schools, which is fantastic. We got some extra funding. And we have been doing our best to make sure that's well-funded. Uh, we have a nurse. Which is awesome. Uh. And one of the things that we need to let the kids know is that it, it's okay to not be okay for a time. And that this weird thing we have at school is weird and it is. And we're gonna get through it and we'll get it through it together, so.
All right. And the next, the next question will be addressed first to Farrell. If a parent asks that a book be removed from the library or the classroom. How should the school board respond?
Well, that's kind of a simple question as you asked me. Um, you know, the, you would, the board should review it. Um, take the uh, request very seriously. So I don't think a parent's gonna, gonna uh. Just come out and say something lame. Uh, the uh, and I feel that parents really need to be uh involved. Um, they need, they are, as I said previously, the, that's, the children are the uh, children of the parents. So, yeah, the um, I think the board would, uh, should, um, take it very seriously and uh. Review the situation, uh, consider, consider the uh problem and that's been um presented and uh. Uh, make a, a. Wise decision on what, what to do with it.
All right. And the next same question to Martha.
Repeat it once more.
How should the? If a parent asks that a book be removed from the library or the classroom, how should the school board respond?
I think that the school board needs to respond immediately. And they need to talk with the parent, find out what the concern is. And um, and then. Respond so that. The parent knows that they can and should control. What their own child reads, that is always going to be an option. We've always had children that can step out. If their beliefs and their, their family concerns don't go with what the curriculum is at the moment. Um, they've sat out for holidays and um, but that uh, one parent cannot. Control what other parents' children are reading. So. I imagine that we, we may be getting more and more of that as it, as it does become one of those more divisive and um. Issues that has been coming up again. So it will have to be handled immediately. And I don't know which way it would go through. If it would start with a classroom teacher, then they mentioned it to a principal, then the principal brings it up at a school board meeting. But whatever it is, I think a parent needs to be um. Be willing to talk with everybody about it and their concerns.
AJ.
If a parent asks for a book to be removed from the school, how should the district or the school board respond? Uh, that's a long chain of. Talking that has to occur before it becomes into our laps. Um, one of the things that I've discovered on the, being on the school board is. I'm not alone and. I have a board of, you know, wonderful people that I get to make decisions with and that. While it might be a parent's concern, that they need to go to the. Teacher, they need to go to the principal and the principal needs to go to the super before it gets to us. And bef- and so. One of the things that. We need to come up with is. Are they ta- are they having clear communication? And why are they wanting this book banned? And. Is it, could it be remedied by stepping out? Or is there an alternative? And so I think it would. For us, it would require quite a. Be quite an ordeal for it to reach us uh in this case.
Anthony.
So just like AJ had mentioned that that's not, that's not as cut and dry as the question asks. Um. I, if there's one thing I learned in law enforcement, I learned really well and most people in the military also is chain and command or rank and file. And as school board members, we don't directly take on individual issues. We're a team of collaborative minds because obviously seven are much. Much more powerful than one to be able to work through and comprehend issues. But like AJ said, the, the matter would be referred back directly to the building supervisor. The principal of that, then at that point, uh, she, and I can say that because we have three great administrators of our buildings. Um, would refer it to the superintendent and they would obviously meet with the parent, hear the concerns. If it got beyond the point of where the superintendent was comfortable with making that decision, then as a school board. We would, our executive board staff would meet with the parent, hear the concerns, and then as a group, we would deliberate. Um, over the matter, whether it's a violation of our policy, our education approach, or creates an overall disruption of the learning environment for other kids. And then make a decision accordingly based on that.
All right. Next question is directed to, first to Martha. Tell us about any experience you have in negotiating with unions.
Well, I have been a union representative and it was a wonderful experience. Um, I believe that in any. Any career or any field, you have to stand up for yourself and request what you deserve. Um. So I've had some experience with that and I believe it's an important part of. Figuring out uh how much a person should be recompensed for the hours and the work and the experience that they have. Uh. Other than that, other than being a parent and negotiating all kinds of similar things with my own children. Um, there's a lot of give and take and um, there's a lot of reality and uh priorities. And uh, waiting for better times. Um. But it, it's serious stuff to pay people well for the time that they're working.
And AJ.
I have previously not had any union negotiations, uh, but since being on the board. Uh, I was able to sit in and help renegotiate uh contracts for our classified staff. And. It was fantastic figuring out how to work with these people and get them the best bang for their buck and. Trying to keep everything civil and smooth. I was fascinated with the amount of back and forth. Between union staff representatives and uh, what we can offer, what they would accept. And. I, I, I was very proud of what we were able to negotiate for our staff, getting them, you know, pricing uh. Uh, wage increases that were very much needed, especially in this time. And so that's gonna be our, one of our biggest struggles going forward is paying staff. So union negotiations and keeping people happy is gonna be um. It's gonna be difficult going forward, but I think. Through great talks and communications, that, that's gonna be key to uh, our success in Banden.
Anthony.
As AJ pointed out, that is gonna be a challenge. We know that our cost of living in Banden is just, uh. You know, it's immense and it's growing rapidly. Um. One of our administrators I know still. One of our administrators I know still lives outside of, you know, has to commute from North Bend every day. Because that's a, you know, that's just the reality of, of the scope of what she has to work with. Uh, as I mentioned, when I worked for the police department, I was a shop steward for our union. So I did negotiate right in that office next door with multiple union contracts with the city manager. And in the process, I learned that um, it's a two-way street. You have to be open, you know, you go in there with the mentality of what. I can try and get for myself, because ultimately my needs and my family is what matters, paying my bills. But also you have to learn to be in, keep in mind that what is, what's also best for the um. For the agency to be uh, to stay afloat and, and to be solvent. And so you learn that and you learn to try to find the happy medium in between, as well as any other items of concern that may come up that need to be in that contract. Whether it be workplace conditions or um, other collateral benefits that are offered. Um, but the biggest part of that is that it's a constant line of open communication and most importantly professionalism. This isn't personal, even though it's personal about our finances. Um, you know, and we take it that way and we try to be as, as, as um, compassionate and understanding as we can. But sometimes it comes down to simple dollars and cents as to what the district can afford to maintain solvency. And keep educating the kids to the level that they expect to be educated.
And now it's Farrell's turn to answer the question.
Well said, Anthony. Uh, I am a recipient of uh, a career. And uh, uh, it, I was a union member for thirty-five years. And so I'm uh, now receiving my uh, pension from that. And uh, so I've uh, never been on a uh, negotiation team of any kind. But uh, as Anthony just said, that uh, it's all uh. You know, give and take, it's uh, uh, being reasonable with your, with your, what you believe is. Equitable for both sides. And uh, you know, you can't uh, be out there in, in. La la land with, with some kind of strange um, beyond the pale. Uh, demand uh, for wages and benefits and everything that goes with uh, the union contracts. And the, and uh, obviously here in Bandon, the um, uh, you know, it takes. Well, housing is the highest um, expense, I, I believe. And of course, it's kind of a. Puts a lot of people uh, to the outskirts and um, it is what it is. Uh, again, like Anthony said, the uh, what can be, what can the uh, the uh, taxpayers afford?
All right, a new question, and this will go first to AJ. How would you balance providing resources for college-bound students? With resources for students on other tracks?
One of the things that we're seeing is the, the price of college education is skyrocketing. With very little in return with that education. We're finding those people that come home from college are not getting the careers that they're looking for. Instead are going into service to try to pay off those loans. One of the things that we are gearing to, up to shift into is more certified programs. Getting our people back to working those higher-paying jobs. Of electricians and plumbers and chefs and uh, I'll, I don't wanna say practical jobs. But jobs that are on a different track, so. CTE is gonna be one of the most. What's the best word? It, it, it's coming forward, it's gonna be one of the most important aspects of our education of our schools is transitioning. Not just, there's gonna be college-bound students, but there's, kids are gonna go into workforce. And we need them to be prepared to transition into that. Uh, and so. One of the best ways is upgrading our shop classes and we just had a rousing uh. Meeting with the shop kids coming in saying, this was the best place for my mental health or, you know, everything for us. And that was a fantastic meeting, just having the kids respond to, yes, I wanna work with my hands. And that's gonna, so fund it.
All right, and Anthony.
So it seems like the simple answer to that would be like, well, let's just survey and pull the number of kids that are going to college versus alternative practices. And then just split those resources accordingly, but I don't think the answer is quite that simple. Um, the resources and if, and I look at resources on two folds, not only the fiscal part of it, but also the staff part of it. Which the staff equates back to fiscal ultimately in the end. Um, but I would say that it's considerably less expensive to prepare a student for college. Unless we're talking about adding additional curriculum for college prep, which is something that if we found that, that the district needed that, absolutely. That's a direction that we need to pursue to prepare these kids. Now, if we look on the CTE side of things where the kids are learning industrial arts trades, that's a much more expensive endeavor for us. When we're talking structure, we're talking equipment as well, staffing and curriculum. So um, I think that that balance, you know, we are seeing more of a trend shifting towards the professionals. Or the, the working professionals of the kids that are going out of our school. So unfortunately, it's not unfortunate, but I think that the reality of it is, is that we would see a lot more of our resources. Being put towards getting those kids the foundational development they need to be able to go directly into the workforce. To later elaborate on a career or a profession that will be fruitful and gainful for their, their lifestyle later on.
And Farrell. You want me to repeat the question?
Go ahead, yeah, sure.
What, how would you balance providing resources for college-bound students with resources for students on other tracks?
Yeah, well, resources, I think the um, um, the education should be top-notch for all of them. The, the, and so a full uh, boat of resource should um, uh, benefit everyone. Uh, and then as time goes by, uh, well, here's an example. My wife uh, got her master's degree um, and went to college. Uh, and she paid for her own, she paid her own way by working. So if we prepare our, the students to, for the, a future of working. In the society that we live in, uh, then they can possibly uh, uh, you know. And not everybody can do what my wife did, I think. I'm not sure I could. But uh, you know, they um, when I was taking my, the apprenticeship class, I had a job. So it's uh, it can be done. Um, that aspect of it. But again, I think uh, the focus should be on a top-notch um, uh. Curriculum education that prepares the students for. A, a, a life here in, in uh, our society.
Martha.
I think that there's no learning that will go unrewarded. I think that if a student is on a college track, that the schools do provide plenty. And they are uh, united with the community college neck, next to us. Uh, there are many online offerings to bolster anything that the high school can't offer. I think that the vocational and the outdoor education experiences um, can. Benefit both, let's say, that there, there is really so much commonality up to the age of eighteen. Between training that can go either way and we have that luxury in our society. We don't have to decide, the kids don't have to decide. Their parents may be deciding for them. And um, but they can benefit from the. The more that we can give them in the high school where they do get their hands on, they do get out. They do see what's required in the work world. They do get specific training. Whether or not that won't prohibit them from going to college. So it is a balancing act of resources. That I think this district has always handled pretty well and probably will continue to do so.
All right, and the next question goes first to Anthony. And I'm not sure if you're, I was personally was not familiar with this House bill. So if you need me to explain it, they, they gave me some information. But the question is, what is your position on House Bill twenty-four seventy-seven? The Parents' Bill of Rights that is currently being considered by the Oregon Legislature?
I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent familiar. I've read the, 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 the kind of the, the headline of the bill. And uh, and I'll admit, I haven't dug all the way into it. There are about six pieces of legislation, I think, that are up this year. And um, the, the fear that I have of this one, that, that's got a commonality with these other pieces of legislation. And they're not all um, being uh, submitted by the same uh, people. But it seems to be a lot of legislation nowadays comes with a one-size-fits-all approach. Which is um, not very ideal for districts um, that fit, you know, that fall outside of that curriculum. Or out of that, out of that mindset, so particularly like a two-way district like us. Where we are continually facing challenges to where li, legislation comes down that we have to comply with. And of course, we're willing to comply with to continue to receive our support from the Oregon Department of Education. And if we don't, then obviously we wouldn't receive that support. And not only that, but be in violation of the law. So when any of these bills come up, I try to look at how they approach and fit. The Bandon School District and our kids and our taxpayers. And they're quite often not very desirable to work with. Or, or I, I, my initial approach is, is like, okay, how are we gonna work with this? How are we gonna comply with this? And how is it gonna affect our day-to-day operations? And quite frequently, um, it's, it's not very ideal um, for, for the approach that we would have to take. So that would be my fear on this one. Like I said, I haven't dug into the full text of the, of the, the proposed piece of legislation. But it, it shares a commonality with a lot of others.
And Farrell.
Yeah, well, uh, I think I'm pretty much with Anthony on that. Uh, what comes out of Salem is uh, is not always desirable. Um. Uh, I haven't, I, you know, just on the surface, the title of the uh, bill, it sounds great. Because I do believe that parents uh, do have rights. Um, I mean, duh. Uh, and so huh, uh, without, as he said, um. You know, delving into the nuts and bolts of this thing, um, I am not. Real um, keen on what uh, the, the uh, Oregon state legislators uh, give us. Or put place before the voters. And uh. So, yeah, I'd have to, uh, I'm a little wary of that sort of thing. But it sounds good.
Course it does.
Sounds real good.
All right, and Martha.
Oh, I don't know the legislation, so I hesitate to try to speak on it. Uh, I, I'd have to read it. I have to understand it.
Well, according to what I've been given, um, the. Among other things, it would prohibit classroom instruction on sexual orientation or gender identity. Absent parental consent before fourth grade and prevent school districts from providing healthcare services. If a parent withholds consent for a specific healthcare service.
Well, okay, thank you for that. I, I think I still have to read it. I'm a very visual learner myself. And I, I did hear that, but I don't think I understand it. Um, but I do think that we need to stay in compliance. Because as a district, we cannot afford to lose funding. And um, yeah, would look forward to topics like that. To understand them better and make a responsible decision for this community in concert with this board.
And AJ.
Would you do me a favor and reread the, what it says?
Okay, and this again is um, apparently just part of what this.
Of course.
Proposed Parents' Bill of Rights, but it would prohibit classroom instruction on sexual orientation. Or gender identity absent parental consent before fourth grade. And prevent school districts from providing healthcare services if a parent withholds consent. For a specific healthcare service, et cetera.
Addressing it like we were, like, I think we've all just said, addressing these issues is not easy. Without seeing the full scope of what it is and how it's gonna come. And like Anthony said, uh, implementing any legislation that comes to our community is tough. And we navigate it the best we possibly can uh, with the children's um. Health and mindset at the forefront uh, of these, of all these legislations that have come down. And how practical they are. We've jumped through many a hoop in the past few years, trying to comply with all the many regulations that have come down. Um, but the Bandon School District, their number one priority is. How can we best serve our kids in and out of school? Um, and we saw that during COVID, that our teachers love their kids, dropping stuff off, making house calls. These parents, the teachers and admin, they love their kids and they want nothing but the best for them. And so how we implement it, um, we'll do our best to be in compliance with the law. Just to make sure that our kids don't fall behind and that they can become the best adults that we can possibly have.
And based on the clock, I think we're at our last question. And so uh, Farrell gets to be the first to answer the last question.
Yay.
And it is, as a board member, would you be open to visiting the schools? To listen and learn about staff and student needs?
Well, I think that's really part of the job. So yes.
All right, and same question to Martha.
I like that, yes. I, I think that is very important. It's something that I look forward to doing. And um, yeah, it's a critical area.
AJ.
I absolutely love walking around the schools and talking to staff and talking to uh, everyone. I try to make it a point to visit as often as I can, which is never enough, yeah. But I also don't wanna be a bug to them because they're always busy with so many kids, uh, and you know, so much stuff. But truly, it, visiting the school and listening, it's. It's the most rewarding part of our, of the, this position, in my opinion, is seeing everyone's bright faces. And getting to know them and how they talk with our kids and love the kids and teach them. And it's, it's fascinating how so many different people come together for the common goal of. Developing a better community together, you know. Our school district's awesome and I look forward to continuing on.
Anthony.
Absolutely not. I send my children to school to get rid of them for six hours. No, I'm just kidding. I, I love every opportunity to get up there. It's, it's, it's so much fun. And even, even all the schools, I don't get over to Ocean Crest as much as, as I should, because uh, obviously I don't have kids there anymore. But the staff over there are amazing and the learning environment, there's just something absolutely special about that place. And I would encourage anybody to go up there and check out and see what's going on. It, it, it never ceases to amaze me when I get in there and walk the hallways. I'll stop by for a fifth, a quick fifteen-minute visit or something. And two and a half hours later, I'm still there. So it's a lot of fun. It's an absolutely amazing place. Being around the kids and our incredibly amazing staff is just heartwarming and rewarding. Um, whether it be getting involved in the classroom or going to sporting events, or one of my favorite things to do. And it makes my daughter so mad because my timing is never right, but I'll go up and have lunch with the kids from Harbor Lights in the gym. And Mr. Kitchen does a pretty darn good job at the food. I'm really impressed. But uh, um, my daughter gets upset because I'll go have lunch with the sixth and seventh, or the seventh and eighth graders and she's in sixth grade. She's like, why can't you? I said, well, every time I come in, you're like, dad, you're here again. And but it's a neat opportunity and it's really neat, especially um, uh, you know, as a school board member, you kinda get carte blanche. To be able to walk through the place and do whatever you want, which is, is a really neat opportunity to be able to drop into classrooms or teachers and, and, and see what's going on. It's, it's a, it's a wonderful thing and I would encourage anybody to do it, whether you're on the school board or not.
Do they charge you for the lunch?
Nope.
Lunch?
Yeah, I learned that this year, actually. Well, that's because you gotta pay for me. No, I learned that we did and I don't remember the full ins and outs of the grant, but we got a grant a couple of years ago um, for the free meals for kids and that extended, extended to parents as well.
All right, so we are now to the point where we're going to be giving one minute each closing statements and we're going to go backwards from the way we started. So, we'll be uh, starting the closing statement first from Mr. Zunino.
Mr. Zunino.
And I, after they've all spoken, then you'll have a chance finally to applaud. But I will encourage you all, if you have individual questions you want to ask any of the candidates, the candidates have all been asked to hang around for a few minutes and be willing to be buttonholed, so, okay?
I'll absolutely hang out, it's more time away from my kids. No, um, so, thank you guys for the opportunity, first of all, for coming out and being engaged members of our voters community. I appreciate people that um, cast informed votes about the uh, direction of our district and the direction of our community. Um, it says a lot and also thank you to the staff that put everything together, we appreciate this. But uh, serving on a school board is probably one of the most absolutely rewarding things that I've ever done in my life. Um, having a direct impact on not only my own children's education, but, but having the distinct honor of representing every single one of you with your interests and your tax dollars is a huge responsibility and it's something that I take very serious. So, thank you guys for that. I, I absolutely appreciate it and I'm an open door. If anybody ever wants to come talk to me, I'm usually pretty easy to find. If I'm not at my office, I'm up at one of the schools. And I'd absolutely welcome even just a conversation about anything that you have concerns about. We can have a cup of coffee and chat anytime, but thank you guys again for coming out.
AJ.
Absolutely, thank you for having us. Uh, this was fantastic. I was extremely nervous. If you couldn't tell by my first few answers before I started to get comfortable with everyone. Uh, I, I love the opportunity to serve on the school board. It's been super rewarding. I love hanging out with everybody, learning, having a direct impact. Telling my kid, you know, when kids go, where are you going? And I go, well, I'm going to go to do school board stuff for you. Uh, it's rewarding when they go, oh, my dad's on the school board. Not just because mom told him, but because he wants to be there. Because, you know, when I visit the schools and the kids see that people care about them, it makes them want to be there and that makes the most difference in, for me. And it makes a difference for them too, knowing that there's people that care, that aren't getting paid, that, that, you know, that aren't responsible for them, like parents. We care.
We don't get naves.
Don't know. I have to pay extra for lunch, I don't know.
All right, Martha.
Well, if this is any example, it looks like the school board would be a lot of fun. Uh, when I first thought about doing it, I thought it's a matter of taking a turn. I've gotten so much from this community, my family has lived here. Uh, we've benefited in so many ways that it seemed like something that had my passion. I've tried other volunteer situations since I've been retired and have enjoyed them, but this one just really gets me. And I would like the opportunity to make an impact and to uh, be in public service again. Thank you.
And Farrell.
Yeah, again, thanks for all you guys to participating and uh, joining with us and uh, and the staff that put this together. Uh, yeah, I'm looking forward to uh, serving with uh, some of these bright people that are here. And uh, I know that it's going to be, um, I can see that it is going to be a very rewarding experience. I've, as uh, Martha said, volunteered in many things and um, here's another one. So, uh, I'm expecting the best.
So, thank you all for coming and thank you League for putting this on. And there is an opportunity to join the League if any of you are so inclined and thank you.